Excuse me, everybody. Will, let me call the Subcommittee on Enrollment to Order. We'll take up one action item for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the June 5, 2023 meeting. I move the approval of action item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item, comments, concerns, issues? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. With no other action items on the agenda, we'll now move on to information items. Last academic year, this committee reviewed data and high-level enrollment initiatives, received a preview of CUNY's marketing campaign, and was briefed on re-engagement and retention efforts. In March and June, Vice Chancellor for Enrollment, Renee Sarmiento, and Assistant Dean for Policy Research, Sarah Trulch, provided an enrollment update and outlined a few strategies to increase the enrollment pipeline. At today's meeting, Vice Chancellor Sarmiento, Associate Vice Chancellor Sigenthaler, and Assistant Dean Trulch will present an enrollment update, discuss FY '23 and '24 communications and marketing strategies, first-year enrollment initiatives, collaborative efforts with administration and finance, CUNY ReConnect, and CUNY Online Enrollment and Expansion. And away we go.
Full agenda.
How are you?
Thank you very much. Let's see. We always start off with the numbers. This is a snapshot of September 1, but it really hasn't changed that much with a little bit of up. So overall, we're up by 1%, which is pretty close, right? The numbers that you see on the left represent the undergrad enrollment, on the right, grad enrollment. So you'll see in the columns with first-time freshmen and undergrad, we're up. And that is the bulk of the increase of enrollment. So we have larger incoming classes, right? And we're holding steady with the undergrad. And so you see even in the grad side on the right, there is an increase in grad. So that is the overall in terms of headcount. Now, one of the things that I'm often asked is what about FTE, which is full-time equivalent, right? So if you could see here, compared to the overall headcount, which is 1%, more students are taking more classes to the tune of 2% compared to last year, right? And so I actually put side by side the headcount, which is the discrete numbers of students, and the number of students collectively going full-time. So you could see freshman is up, transfers are up. And I think part of that has to be the no COVID mandates, right? And there is this, when we look at the freshmen that are coming in, they're new freshman grads. So they're not the ones that are COVID cohorts. These are actually students who have graduated this year into the fall. So that gives you an idea of where we are in the fall. And I think there was, somewhere in the summer, we were up in the 10% range in these new students, right? So we kind of leveled off, a little bit of increase. But here's the thing that I want to bring home, which is especially good for the faculty, is that these students registered earlier, got their financial aid in place, or able to take advantage of some of the summer programs, because we all know that the students coming from the DOE need that extra support. So a lot of the learning recovery programs in the fall, all of the CD and C programs, we got a chance to really kind of look at, and the student is more prepared. And we all know that the earlier they register, the more they're retained. So very shortly, if not already, the city will be covered with CUNY marketing and communications. And so traditionally, it's been like come to CUNY, but it's going to be now college-specific recruitment, particular colleges, online, fall recruitment. It's now being segmented in ways that could help the colleges with enrollment.
What determines, when you're making college-specific, what determines where those ads is tied into geographic area, or is it just in general?
So if the colleges had it their way, everyone is important. But the Vice Chancellor for Marketing and Recruitment chose the colleges in the specific boroughs that are struggling the most with enrollment. That's how, yeah.
Okay.
Because if you think about it, many of the programs in all the different boroughs, they're all similar, right? Everybody has a business program, everyone has a nursing program. And so the thought process is, how do we lift those colleges that may not have the same exposure as, say, Baruch, Hunter, John Jay? How do we highlight, you know, that college on the beach, right? Like Grevers, York, and so forth. So that's the rationale for that.
You should note additionally, Mr. Chairman, they're running ads in Long Island. Because Long Island residents get New York City rates, and they're already up and running on the LIRR, so they're pretty incredible.
Yeah, and they're big visuals, not small. They're really big. They wrap around the whole subway car, right? It's really, it's not something, you can't.
Can't miss it.
You can't miss it, right? So over this last year, we have been focusing on the Fab Five to support freshman initiatives. These are now active, right? The welcome letter has been cosigned by the DOE Chancellor, as well as our Chancellor. That's going out in a few days. The application fee waivers, all the schools already know what's happening, not just in the DOE, but New York State. So all of the private high schools, the yeshivas, the Catholics, all of them, and all of New York State, they're all notified that between October 16th and October 31st, they'll be able to apply for. So, and the net price calculator is connected to the welcome letter so that they could see affordability. And then these two are coming and will support Fall '24 efforts. So this could not have happened if we didn't have the partnership with CIS, the Computer Information Systems at CUNY. So in enrollment, we always look at, we're like the retail industry. When you guys are thinking about the Fall '23, we're already looking at Fall '24, right? So what I want to be able to focus on for the next year is that pipeline between non-credit and credit, now that we have workforce tap. How do we blend those two? These people are on our campuses right now. And how their children could attend those courses, how adults who don't have degrees are kind of retooling. How do we connect that, as well as graduate and international? So those are the things that we're going to be focusing on '24, while we simultaneously work on Reconnect and the first year of Fab Five. So one of the things, we talked about a lot about the process of trying to ease the pipeline, but we can't get away from looking at how do we help the colleges and how do we address the finance piece, right? So in partnership with administration and finance, now students who have families that are outside of the country can now pay in their own currency. And that's big. We also, the flexible payment options, now there's a six-month and 12-month plan. Easing those students, because we do have a lot of students who have outstanding balances, and how do we get them back into school? We also provided the colleges with a software that helps them call adult students, people who are within their geographic area, who have expressed an interest in coming back to school. And every time the student makes a change to their schedule, they're notified immediately that there may be a change in their balance, which is also helpful for students, because it sometimes affects their aid. The other thing we're doing is looking at debt counseling and financial literacy. I'd like this to start in K-16, right? Families need to understand the literacy challenges and work around it through counseling. The expanded loan pilot, where there is a small loan in the award letter for students, that's going forward. And we're also revising the tuition fee manual. There is currently no student-facing tuition fee manual. It's this really long thing, right? And how do we distill it in a way that students understand, right? What's a student activity fee, what the tuition is, and then what the payment plans are, right? In a way that kind of, that is user-friendly and not text debts. I use, this is the first time we're trying to put forward a professional development series at CUNY, and especially at the community colleges. The Vice Presidents of Enrollment Management picked three individuals that are rising stars, because I'm not always going to be in this position. And how do we grow our talent within CUNY? Most of the individuals that are in the CUNY Rising Stars Program, on average, have served a minimum of 10 years in their current position and are waiting for an opportunity to be in leadership. So this is an opportunity for them to get leadership skills, to expose them even to meetings like this, right? To figure out how they fit, their world fits into overall CUNY. The CUNY Reconnect 2.0, is there a visual? No, this is weird. There was a visual there, it's that white space bothers me. But we got Reconnect 2.0 because we did so well, right? And of the $5.8 million, 50% of it was distributed to the campuses. They know they're adult students. And how do we help them is something that we really need to be able to assist with. We also have, we devoted some money to colleges to help graduate their students. They have excess credits, and they don't even know they could graduate. How do we identify them? Believe it or not, they don't know that they could graduate with their degrees, right? And also providing funding for our navigating staff who are working with colleges and a full call center. Now, the results of this, is this, oh, no. The whole thing is gone. Well.
Yeah, it's on here, so I don't.
I know, I don't know why. But let me just tell you that our goal was 15,000, and as of fall, we're right around at 7,300. So we're 50% there, right? Let me give you some data about where they're coming from. The majority of our adult students are coming from Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx. They're coming from the outer boroughs. Less than 10% are in Manhattan. And what I really like is 8% in Staten Island. For proportionate with one college being there, that's a pretty high number. So there are a lot of adults there. So 60% are female, and 61% are over the age of 24, right? And the rest are in a little bit. But I think that, yeah, I kind of, I kind of actually know this all by heart now, so. But also to say that Reconnect, I think not only will we be able to meet that, but we're also looking at the retention of Cohort One. And at one particular college, they're graduating and they're retaining at a very high number. So I hope in the next meeting that I could report back on what happened with Cohort One of, I think it's over 16,000 students.
If I can just add something that I've been really happy to see, that Renee has fostered with her leadership. Reconnect has allowed us to work very closely with the campuses. And where there are gaps and ebbs and flow, from the central perspective of when we're not busy, we are supporting the campuses with their work, so that there's never a time people aren't working, we're just redirecting to where that need can be best accommodated. So it really is a whole new level of efficiency that we haven't tried before.
Yeah, and I think the campuses are saying, you want to help us enroll our students? You want to call our students? Yes. We're at a point where we could stop, and in August, we helped three schools make sure their students got registered. It makes sense, right? If we could do it, and with the call center, because sometimes you can't always answer the phone and help the student, and there's limited staff. So we're more than happy to help. So.
Sorry, your iPads all have the presentation uncorrupted, so.
Oh, good, all right. So, yeah, that's right. But I don't know what happened to them, but memorize these things. But all this to say that there are a lot of initiatives that we're working on, both with the campuses, with our partners, and CIS, and OAA, and even advancement. So we're looking at how we're doing this. And this is what we would like success to be, right? This kind of straight line. But in reality, as I just went over the numbers and the slight increase, this is what our success is going to look like. It's going to be this kind of struggle to be able to get to where we need to do to help the campuses, but in the end, that arrow still continues to go up. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Kim to talk about online. Unless anybody has any questions regarding enrollment. Yes?
Not so much a question. I just want to say, this was actually my favorite slide of the presentation, because I think it actually is very, it's not just like what does success look like for CUNY. I think it's actually a really important message for our students. Because really, that is what success looks like in life for most of us, and probably in particular for most of our students. So I actually thought that was just sort of hats off.
Yeah, I saw that, I'm like, hey, I resonate. Any other questions? Yes?
So I might have a naive view on how enrollment worked this fall, but I saw two big growths. One, I was very pleased to see the chart that doesn't appear here, Staten Island with over 400 Reconnect students.
Yes.
The other one that hit the community colleges, and particularly the comprehensive colleges, was the first-time freshman growth, which I believe was a result probably of the lifting of the vaccine mandate that made changes. But in both cases, I consider those typically not at-risk populations, but at risk of dropping out along the way. And you had mentioned retention as an issue with the Reconnect students. I think it's also likely an issue with the new freshmen that we saw that really contributed to enrollment rebounds at several places. And the question is generally, what retention efforts are we doing with the campuses that are led by Central?
Yeah, so extensive efforts. And one thing to say, because it's an interesting question that I've wanted to dig into. When we see these changing numbers, what part of that is a failure to retain? And what part is a failure to grow? And where do those two things intersect, right? Because it's one thing to bring folks in, it's quite another to keep them. And what our data has told us so far is actually it's been the smaller classes that has resulted in that decline, much less so than in lack of retention. So that was really positive information for me and for my team. But we have developed an entire system-wide approach to infusing artificial intelligence into our student success programs with advising. So we're talking about across the campuses. I think you saw an article in the New York Times, possibly. That is not the system that we procured system-wide. Interestingly enough, that was sort of, you know, an early adopter with a different program. But we have contracted with the National Institute for Student Success to take where we are and do these powerful analytics and algorithmic alerts looking at hundreds of data points integrated with our advisement system that should be an absolute game changer. It's been shown to, most importantly to me, to level out equity so that we see similar retention and graduation rates despite, irregardless of socioeconomic status, race, gender, any of those things. So we have quite a comprehensive plan in this space. Happy to talk more about that. Actually, we're going to talk about it today, but we didn't have enough time, so.
Just real quick, will those be reported in the PMP, which has somewhat of a narrow set of metrics that get reported? Or will they be part of future reports to this committee?
Yes, and in fact, there's a completely public dashboard, and you all will get an even more in-depth look than the public. But we are getting into the granular level at all of these things, and it will be publicly trackable. So it's very transparent, and we're very committed to rising those numbers.
Thank you.
Can I add also, one thing John didn't mention. There was also not just a 5% increase in first-time freshmen, but there was a 7.5, I think it was 7.5% increase in transfer students. And I think, yes, the vaccine plays a role in that, but also the messaging that we've done in our outreach efforts for transfer, you can see that reflected in an above, that's the highest number I think we had on the sheet. So we're very happy to see that momentum growing.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I want to give you an update on what's happening with the CUNY online initiative. So it's important, as we begin talking about these numbers, to keep in mind that prior to last year, we had no coding in place either for students or programs to consistently and accurately identify students in fully online programs or programs that were fully online. We had some at specific campuses, but in terms of CUNY-wide, we did not have that. So this year really serves as the baseline for this information. We spent last year making sure that we were identifying programs, getting all the coding in place, so that we could begin to really track this. So to point out that our fall numbers alone exceed what were my early projected numbers, not only for this entire academic year, but for next academic year. So we're a full year ahead in terms of enrollment. That's a great start for our campuses to begin to see those kinds of enrollment numbers. It's also important to note the demographics of this population. With 74% of those being over age 24, the vast majority are transfer students. And these are, understand, these are new students as of fall, because we didn't have the coding in place to identify them before. So this does not count continuing students. So these are new for fall, and then the vast majority are also part-time. This is exactly the audience that we sought to target with the expansion of online programs. So we're on track with that.
And it's worth mentioning, the first website which brought together all of these programs wasn't launched until, what, late March?
Late March.
Late March, and so minimal marketing efforts. You know, everything was really consolidating and creating these sites. So this is the result basically with no marketing. So it gives you some sense of what is possible, hopefully, as we go forward.
Yeah, and so just to speak to that a little bit, and I'll get into it a little bit more. But, and it's also shown in the expansion of online programs. As we began this conversation about expanding online programs, campuses really came to this conversation with a great deal of energy. So when we began to talk about developing, revamping the CUNY online website and putting the campus programs on that website to increase the visibility, the campuses in turn began to enhance their own websites and to make their online programs more visible on their online, on, own, hell, online websites. So it was a combined effort, sort of this momentum builder. And so what we see is some really dramatic growth in the number of fully online programs over the past year. And so again, last year was where we were trying to really understand what the programs were. And so as of last January, we had identified 127 fully online programs offered by 16 campuses. As of August, that number had increased to 183 fully online programs offered by 18 campuses. Today, so we're just a little bit later into the conversation, we're at 189 online programs. So they're continuing to surface. And there are more, as you see the number of submissions to NISID for approval to deliver online programs. Now, not all of those will be fully online, but the vast majority of them will be. And based on the conversations that I'm having with the campuses, I anticipate that by this time next year, I'll be telling you that our number of online programs is in excess of 220. So there's some really dramatic rapid growth that demonstrates the campus's commitment to serve those students who, because of their complicated lives, are unable to engage in in-person classes.
An important point I want to say here, all of those were created by CUNY faculty members. All of them. And so those were taught by our faculty and created by our faculty. I know that's been a question as we've gone forward. That's been, and all of that growth was involuntary growth. Nobody was forced to do it, nobody was required to do it. We offered them the support to help them put together their own programs. And many of them, as you can see and imagine, were very close. And as they went back and looked, they only had to add in a few classes in order to create a fully online program. So that's how we ended up with that growth.
And as we focus on this next year, we're particularly interested or committed to growing online program offerings in several high-demand areas. In particular, healthcare, education, technology, and business. And so to achieve that, it's a very collaborative approach, where we're working with the Office of Career and Industry Partnerships, with our university deans for Health and Human Services and for Education, with the provost, their deans, their department chairs, and faculty to identify those opportunities and assess where there is the interest and the commitment to doing that, and then putting resources behind that to enable the campuses to develop those programs. Yes?
Thank you. If you could go back to the slide that was like, you know, the, right? That's the perfect slide. Are you going to be tracking sort of transitions in and out of like online student enrollment to in-person enrollment? Because I imagine that over time, as people's employment situations change, or as kids get in school, so to not just sort of track that baseline, but to actually track changes, just as a point of like information to help us understand where folks are moving?
Yeah, so it's interesting and it's complicated, because we have a number of different student populations. This group represents those students who self-identified as fully online by applying to and enrolling in a fully online program. So this is not the student who is likely to move back and forth between online and in-person, depending on what their schedule looks like that semester. We have a large number of students who do move back and forth. And so we need to track them as well. So what we'll have is, one semester, a student might be enrolled in only online classes, so they would be considered 100% online. But the next semester, because life changes, right? They're enrolled in half online and half in person. And the next semester, it's fully in person. We don't want to count those in this population. We do need to track them, we need to understand what their enrollment patterns are, and making sure that we're meeting their needs. But they are a different set of students than what we're talking about here.
No, I agree. I was thinking not just meeting their needs. I'm wondering if there might be some hidden information and some insights about.
Yeah, we're at the very.
Are we drawing people into in-person? Are we drawing people from in-person into online, right? What's the interaction between the offerings that we've got?
And so I'll also tell you that we're in the process of developing, for lack of a better word, we call an audit report, that will tell us whether students in fully online programs are actually taking only online classes. Because as this group is probably aware, if you're in a fully online program, there are financial implications, right? Because you're charged an administrative fee of $75 a semester. Because if you're at a senior college or in a graduate program, you get in-state tuition regardless of where you live. So it's important. So it's important that we track those to make sure that students who are being charged that fee or getting that tuition break are in fact in that right student group. So we'll be tracking those. But yes, there's much to be learned as well from whether students are transitioning from an online program into a hybrid program, or into an in-person program, or the reverse.
And I'll just add, what, none of this captures is the enrollment that wants flexibility, right? Doesn't want to come to a fully online program, but now looks at the course schedule and sees a robust offering in different places. We talked to so many students who made clear that they need at least one class, or two classes, so that they don't have to come every night. And if that's not there, even though they want to be in person, they won't enroll. So it's very much undercounting, I think, the attractiveness that this adds, and the access that it provides for a large number of students.
Yeah, when Wendy showed these numbers to the UFS, I immediately looked at the SPS enrollment numbers and figured it was cannibalizing. But in fact, those numbers are up this semester, so it's, this is a new set of students. And my question is, I then divided 2116 by 23, and I got 11 students per program. I'm wondering which programs are getting the bulk of the students, and if they match up with the report that was done in December, identifying areas that CUNY should move into.
Yeah, so again, it's important to put that in the context of when these programs became more visible, when we began to market those. Some of the programs that are included in this count really only launched this fall. So I can't tell you specific, well, I can, I can tell you generally, programs that have been longer established as online at campuses that have done some of their own marketing previously have the higher enrollments, because of visibility, right? But as Wendy mentioned, and I'll talk about it a little bit more, we barely begun marketing our online programs as such. One, the website launched in late March. Then we began to roll out our digital ads, because we couldn't do any of that marketing without the website as the foundation to drive students to. Plus, we were very, very limited in the amount that we could spend on marketing because of procurement rules. And so we've worked with the Communications and Marketing Office to get the exceptions now in place, so that we can radically ramp up the marketing that we're doing.
What prevented you from doing that before?
Procurement. Procurement rules.
It's been a good nine, at least nine months that we have been waiting for that to go through.
Yeah, and so in the, like, the first six months, we could spend, what was it, Monica? Like $100,000 across all these programs?
Oh, Sharon.
Sharon can't answer that.
I know this very well.
But we, it has to be open source. It has to, you know, it has to go through all the steps, and then it goes to the state controller's office. So it is, there is none of this that happens quickly, which is why it's so, we're so happy that we were able to get this far with what we were able.
But yeah, we do, with, with the marketing increase that we'll be doing, we anticipate truly exponential increases in enrollment. Again, because of visibility, and clearly there's a need and a demand among adult students, which is our target market. Yeah, John?
While we're talking about marketing, this was last spring sometime, maybe May, I went and looked at SUNY Online and CUNY Online to compare. And I was very pleased how SUNY had put the quality standards that they had in place for their offerings front and center on their website. I'm not sure they're still there, but the CUNY marketing tended to be driven towards the price per credit. And I thought it sent the wrong message. And I know that some faculty are very concerned about the perceived quality of the programs. I think it would be very good to make sure that there's upfront statement as to what practices are in place to ensure the quality of the programs that are being offered under this umbrella.
Yeah, so John, I really appreciate your support on that because ultimately, for online classes, as for in-person classes, quality really rests with the, with the faculty member who's teaching that. And so we're beginning some conversations around how do we ensure that there are certain quality standards in place? Part of that conversation will have to be with department chairs in determining whether or not their faculty are in fact prepared to teach well in the online environment. And so that is, that is something that we want to pursue. But, you know, there's, there's that balance, right? In how much we can mandate, and how much of that really belongs to the faculty. So we're working on that. And so my, my image also disappeared off the slide.
I know.
As did the heading, so who knows? But, so I want to talk a little bit more about the marketing. We would love to put quality assurances on the website when we're confident that those are in place. And so this is a continuing conversation. It's been, Wendy, probably a conversation we've been having with the provost for eight or nine months at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting challenge, John, because we don't at Central identify the quality of any in-person program. The faculty represents that with the quality of the faculty, right? And so the question is, what role do we have? Where we are funding the development of the program, quality matters has to be, they have to be met, because we are funding those programs. Where the campuses have identified their programs, the faculty are the masters of those programs, and are expected to work with the provost to certify the quality of that program. We certainly would be willing to move beyond that, but that is a huge faculty governance issue, as you can imagine, that we would have to have a conversation about.
Yes?
No, this was very interesting. And where we started and what the prospects are look like we can accomplish a lot. Not sure, on the demographics, are they more, have we looked at both internationally, nationally? And has that been broken down to that extent? Or is that something to be considered?
We're, we're getting there. Again, we're, we're still building some of the dashboards, some of the reporting around that. But it's really, the growth right now is organic because we've not done much marketing. And so it's, it's going to be more New York central. As we do marketing, and also we'll have to have a strategy, a marketing strategy for region that aligns with the type of program. So community college students by and large don't travel. Not even online, they don't travel. Bachelor students are more likely to, graduate students certainly do. And so we want to make sure that we're aligning our marketing efforts with the, if you will, mobility of those particular student populations to enroll from, whether it's Australia, or Oregon, or Queens. And so, John, you've been on the CUNY online website. Right now, it's still really bare bones. We wanted to get it up and get it functional, but there is a plan to continually enhance that, both in terms of the information that's provided, the look and feel of it, how students can interact with it and move through it, so that again, it becomes a really effective source of information for students, prospective students to make informed decisions about enrolling in a fully online program at CUNY. As I mentioned, we're increasing the digital buys. Digital media is really the most effective way to reach this target market. And so that's where we're concentrating our spends. We're partnering with Renee's team, both in terms of our automated communication flows, Sharon. And in tapping into the enrollment counselors or the navigators, again, to help convert those prospective students into enrolled students. And that wraps it up. What other questions do you have?
Other questions? Quick presentation. We should join this. That's it, on the presentation. Okay. No more items on the agenda. I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Yeah, that's it.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All of those in favor? Any opposed, abstentions, or adjourned?